Head and call informational meeting to order. The only thing on the agenda is a presentation by Kathy Gant. I said, Kathy, equality in the workplace. It's all yours.
All right.
Kathy, hold on just a second. We'll do roll call here.
Okay. We'll be formal. Ron Wyffenbach.
Here.
Patty Martenson.
Yes.
Sam Quaker. Bill Crebkey. Karen Gunderson Olsen. Deb Hadcock. Ron Kroger.
Here.
Lloyd McRoy. Aaron Costello.
Here.
Malcolm Chapman.
Kathy, we might have a few walk-in later, a little bit later here, but you can go ahead and start anytime you want.
We're just busy being programmed here. Enjoying the nice cool room. Okay. I would like to speak to you council members about equality in the workplace and equality in the city, Rapid City. There are, you see all kinds of people walking around. We have all kinds of laws to address them, but there are some people that are not looked at directly, so they wind up being overlooked. And basically, I want you to take a long, hard look today and put in your thoughts concerning your legislation, equality issues that address absolutely everyone in this community, regardless of what their sexual orientation or gender identity happens to be. We're all about a dialogue as a means for creating positive change. I come to you today from the Black Hills Center for Equality, which is an organization that is an umbrella group that represents a number of gay issues from parents, alcohol support, fitting into the community, HIV diagnosis and treatment. And we find very often that the clients who come to our center have been discriminated against because of their sexual orientation, and we're here to speak out on behalf of fairness in the workplace and in the community. I'd like you to imagine that you yourselves have a son or a daughter who might be lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. What do you want for your kids? You want every chance for success in that child's life. You want them to be able to grow up and earn a good living. You want them to be able to provide for their family. You want them to be able to lead happy, independent, productive lives. It's a lot more difficult when there are not laws that protect your sexual orientation. You know, you want them to have their jobs where they can work hard and perform high, where they get judged on, you know, what they do, not who they are, and so that they can excel, prosper, and grow. Yes, there is discrimination. There's discrimination here in Rapid City, and there are pockets of discrimination here in South Dakota. Yet sexual and orient and gender or identity can legally be used in this state and in this town as a basis for hiring and firing, as a basis for wages, compensation, and for promotions and so forth in places that don't have gender equity protection. Four out of 10 lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender people report having experienced employment discrimination. And on an average, gay men earn 10% less than their heterosexual counterparts, not including the lost benefits that they don't accrue for their families. Yet sexual, what are these groups? The Ts are the transgenders. In the old usage of the word, it meant a person whose gender identity or their internal feelings of being a man or woman differs from actually the way they were biologically born. However, we found now that it's become an umbrella term that includes a wide range of identities beyond simply male or female. It often includes preoperative or postoperative transsexual people, even those who have not considered the affordability of having themselves surgically changed to the sex that suits In other words, a transgender is anyone whose behavior or identity falls outside the typical norms for their gender and could thus be called transgender. In 20 states, there are laws that protect from discrimination based on sexual orientation. In 12 of those states, that law also includes gender identity. In these states, employers cannot make employment decisions such as hiring or firing, promotion, training, or compensation based on the sexual orientation or gender identity of their employee. You can see in this map up on the wall the states that actually have nondiscrimination laws. Notice that we have several states that are joined South Dakota that already have these laws in place. And South Dakota stands as a great big blank spot. In Rapid City, we want Rapid City to join the ranks of the forward-thinking and fair-minded cities such as Brookings and Lead by amending our Human Relations Act of 1972 to include Rapid City and to address issues of employment, housing, and public accommodations so that the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgendered persons can receive the same treatment that any other patron or employee employ enjoys. If our city law included sexual orientation and gender identity, the kids wouldn't have to leave the city just because they're different. I can't tell you the number of people that I have met who have left Rapid City or left South Dakota because it was such a gay intolerant, gay unfriendly place. They have no chance for success and happiness as long as those attitudes persist. And if we had that kind of sexual orientation and gender identity language in our laws, it would support South Dakota's economic development interests while we compete with other states to recruit and retain talent. You wouldn't believe how many of these talented people simply walk away from us because it isn't safe or comfortable here. Now, what really needs to happen amongst you is to amend the Rapid City laws to bring into full being the meaning of the 1972 Equality Legislation that was passed federally. There's already a positive movement in this direction. It's just a matter of time, and it's our job to help make process, progress. It's my job to assist you in any fashion, and it's your job to design the laws. Progress lies not in enhancing what we have right now, but advancing what we need to The best way to proceed with amending Rapid City law is to document why it's in the best interests of Rapid City, to identify your existing support systems, and to address all rational objections and fears using facts and data. Then all of this needs to be communicated to the city attorneys and you council people to emphasize the values of fairness and equality. Now, you can obtain reference material for all of these issues from Equality South Dakota and from local sources such as the Black Hills Center for Equality to assist in drafting this language change. There is, in many parts of this state and country, overwhelming public support for broader employment protections. Nationally, 89% of Americans believe that gay people should be protected from being unfairly fired. And even in South Dakota, there are 77% of the people, according to a survey conducted by Equality South Dakota in October, 77% of South Dakotans favor a federal employment nondiscrimination act, including the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender protections to go into current effect throughout South Dakota. And actually, the private employers are way ahead of many of the city and state organizations in this. 85% of the Fortune 500 companies have voluntarily adopted policies that include sexual orientation. And this is a marked, you know, increase. Eight years ago, only 51% of those business organizations had language protecting workplace equality based on gender or gender preference. And you can bet that these people are not doing that kind of change unless it serves their bottom line. They recognize that there is a vast pool of talent out there that they can't afford to overlook, and it's in their own business interest to protect those employees by adopting gay-friendly policies. And over 30 of the 50 largest South Dakota employers have similar policies, and I'll be showing you a list of many of them shortly. The Society for Human Resource Managers, which is the world's largest human resource association, has endorsed the Federal Employment Nondiscrimination Act and says that diversity and inclusion are core business strategies. Having an inclusive and nondiscrimination policy is actually the best business practice, according to almost all human resources practitioners. When an employer, when an employee feels valued and respected, that employee is happier, he's more productive, and he's more loyal. Having policies that reflect that a value and respect for diversity give them the competitive advantage in recruiting talent. There is a gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender consumer market that's worth, in this country, about $660 million, billion dollars. And, believe me, we watch. We watch for business places and governments that do validate our existence and guarantee equity and safety. And we, of course, spend our money accordingly. Smart employers also know that losing trained employees or qualified candidates is an expensive process, especially in big companies, when a business invests in attracting and holding on to the right employees. Adopting fair workplace policies is a good economic development strategy as South Dakota struggles to keep college grads in the state and entice natives who have left to come back. Within South Dakota, we already have a very marked list of fair, fair market employers: Wells Fargo, Walmart, Home Depot, Mid-Continent, Quest. These are all names and businesses that we do business with every day, and all of them have adopted equal employment policies within their organizations because it well serves their bottom line. Here are some more of them. Avera McKinnon, one of the biggest, you know, hospital setups in the state. Rapid City Regional, Prairie Lakes Healthcare. Our universities. Daktronics, a huge manufacturer. John Morrell, a big meat manufacturer. Billion Auto. Jacobson Construction. Capital Building. These people are all already on board, and these are significant employers and businesses within the Rapid City community as well. So there is no reason for Rapid City itself to not have that equity language in its own city dealings and operating in a heads-up fashion for other business places that might be willing to advocate actively for nondiscrimination. You can see that the state of South Dakota is presently not quite as white as looked on the earlier map. There are actual cities and counties that have adopted equity language into their charters and legal structure. Watertown, Brookings, you know, Hot Springs, Lead recently came on board. Rapid City has it under consideration. We would like to see it firm. You know, Shannon County, the entire county has embraced equality in their hiring policies. School districts are embracing it. Shannon County, Yankton, Vermilion, Brookings, Sioux Falls, Pierre, Aberdeen is currently considering it. There is no reason why Pennington County can't be another school district that practices equality in hiring. Statewide organizations, Goodwill, the State Board of Regents, ARP, of which I am a loyal member, and many of the advocacy organizations that operate on behalf of battered women and child protection issues are also already on board with equality as part of their charters. Now, what you can do, or what I can do to help you, is, is to refer you to myself and others in suggesting approaches and strategies. I can assist you with fact-finding. I can make introductions and open some doors for those of you who really want to investigate seriously, doing some language changes to introduce equality. And the best organization for that in the state is Equality South Dakota. And you can go to their website. They would have people on your doorstep with briefcases full of material to assist you. The Black Hills Center for Equality, we can do community outreach and work with any and all council members in helping you to detoxify this issue with some of your constituents. I'm not unrealistic enough to believe that being proactive when it comes to gay rights is politically a difficult position to take in this town, indeed in this state. But what we have discovered, by simply being here, we've made ourselves visible and identified these workplace needs for us as a group, and it is astounding the number of stories that we can provide that illustrate sticking points and solution points for all, dealing with all the myriad problems that go with, with developing this language. Part of the problem, I think, in the past has been that as a gay community, we have been content to be not visible. We've been happy to just quietly function and not attract attention. And I discovered after moving to Rapid City a couple of years ago, after living in the wonderful town of Tilford for a decade, that the community really was not particularly visible. And a number of us have decided that that's no longer acceptable, that we can't assist you or want change unless we let you know who we are and what we want. And that's really my sole purpose in being here today. If everybody in Rapid City who was gay, who was lesbian, who was bisexual or transgendered would suddenly turn purple on a Sunday night, you'd be shocked when you went to work on Monday morning to see all the purple faces. We're at your grocery checkouts. We're in your schools. We're in your churches. We're in your auto repair shops. We're on construction sites. We're in hospitals. We're all over this town. And the rising feeling in this community is that we're not content to not be visible. We're not content to walk around being purple, but we want the same laws that apply to everyone else apply to us as well. And that isn't happening automatically. The laws are on the books, but they're not being enforced. So what is really required is to have the specific language that specifically protects these minorities. We've done it for the handicapped. We're working with that. You know, this is basically the same kind of issue. And we just, our picture just went away. Okay. So are there any questions that you have that I could answer for you?
Yeah, just confirm that the, some of the figures that are on the presentation were from Equality South Dakota.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
They have, they have conducted the surveys. They have the manpower and the funding to do it, and they have offered themselves as a resource to any community, any city, any county, any government group that wants to institute legal changes. They have the data, the research, the facts, and the lawyers to help, help these people shape the language and change that they want, basically to put teeth into laws.
Any other questions for Kathy? Kathy, I do have, I guess, one on your slide presentation there. I think you said that recent, a recent poll in 2008 said that basically 70% of South Dakotans believe that there should be laws in effect. Have you, have you went, tried to get something passed through the state?
I'm sure there are measures that are, you know, being attempted. I don't know if it was part of the last session or not. I think it's still under advisement. You know, I think they're still working with a core of state legislators to introduce a bill to make it South Dakota law in compliance, in conformity with the federal law.
I mean, I guess, in my mind, I mean, that would be the, instead of working on community, you know, communities one by one, that you would go to the state with that kind of, you know, those, those kind of numbers of support, you think you'd, that's where you'd want to go to.
Are you telling me, Ron, that you don't want to do it until the governor tells you you gotta do it?
No, I, but I, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, that, you know, if we were to do it, it's just Rapid City, then you still have basically all the rest of the communities in the state of South Dakota where, you know, if there's that kind of support out there, you would think then that you would have the ability for the state legislators to put something into effect that would be a requirement for everyone.
It's beginning. It's beginning. And I think Equality South Dakota has decided on a two-pronged attack. They're working not only with the state legislators, but working within communities and counties as well. You know, they're, they're getting this language into cities like, you know, Brookings, Vermilion, Lead, you know, and that is, is one avenue. Then they're working on county governments as well. And, you know, the work continues to expand both the cities and the counties because that's going to be what impacts with the state legislature. You know, the, the citizens of the state, you know, when 77% of them want to change and the legislators don't do it, what do you do? Then that's, then that's a problem to work on with the legislature. So we go back and work within the communities in the hope that that energy filters up to that state level. But they are working with some of the state legislators as well. I believe that the actual sticking point that got their measure defeated in conference last session was they were willing to do it for lesbians, they were willing to do it for gays, they were even willing to do it for bisexuals, but they weren't willing to do it for transgendered people. And it's like, that's sort of selective nondiscrimination. And from our perspective, that is no kinder than not having legal protection at all. So rather than compromise, that bill did not go forward, and it won't go forward until it does include the transgender language as well. Because those folks are just as out of the mainstream, and we're not talking the entire population. I mean, if you, if you explore gay issues, research is going to tell you that 5 to 8% of the population is in some fashion gay, in some fashion sexually different, you know. And it isn't as though they're going to suddenly increase those numbers. Gay is something that you don't become. You know, you are born that way. You are born with your own sexual identity. And what has been noted in other states and areas is that although it did not increase the numbers of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered community, it simply made them more visible and more comfortable. It suddenly became unimportant who you slept with when you went to work. You know, you went to work to work. You went to rent a room to rent a room. And what your sexual identity happened to be was of no importance. And that's what makes the difference between a vibrant community and a closeted, sheltered, hidden, angry community. And when it isn't open and protected, believe me, what we experience is the potential for that kind of fear and guardedness. And that really does diminish the quality of what we have to offer, the quality of what we bring to the community at large. I mean, the vast number of my friends and my family are not gay. You know, they're just as straight as can be, and I have aunties and uncles and parents. I came from parents, too. You know, and it took some of them longer to accept my difference. Most of them went, "Well, you're still Kathy, and you've always been a part of this family, and you always will be." And that has made a world of difference for all of us in our continuing comfort level in functioning as a family. And that's no different when you apply it to a workplace. When I was a journeyman sheet metal worker, it was strange enough when I walked in the door wearing a tool belt and swinging a hammer. I mean, there were no other women on my crew. And that in itself was startling, but when the men discovered that, yes, indeed, I could pick up my end of the pipe and carry it, I could shimmy up and down a scaffold, I could drill holes in concrete and, you know, put up HVAC equipment, just as well as they could, they relaxed. Initially, it was startling. They were not accustomed to seeing a female in a hard hat. And suddenly, some of them had to think just a little bit differently about their daughters and just a little bit differently about their sons and the choices that they could make. And it's simply a matter of awareness, and there's always that initial shock, and it does take courage on both sides, you know, to, to reach that meeting ground. That's why I'm coming to you today. You're going to have to be very courageous. There's going to be a number of people who are going to support you and assist you in bringing about this language change in our laws. But you will be amazed at the avid campaigners that you will have, you know, when, when that does happen.
Kathy, we do have some more lights here, so, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Ron. Kathy, thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate you taking the time and for all the wealth of information you have. One of the first things you mentioned was that you want equality that addresses everyone. And while it's obvious that this focuses on gender identification, sexual orientation, what other areas of discrimination do you feel need to be addressed?
There are other groups who can be discriminated against, like the handicapped, but Rapid City- But Rapid City has done a marvelous job of tapering its curbs to accommodate them. You know, you don't fire someone because they come to work on crutches. What we want is to have gay, lesbian, transsexual, bisexual individuals be able to come to work, be open about who they are, and simply do their work without the fear of being fired. That's the biggest issue. That's the biggest issue.
So do you feel that gender identification, sexual orientation are really the last two large groups that are being discriminated against?
One might hope. One might hope. Because it's also a multiracial group. You know, when I say gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgendered, there are blacks, there are Native Americans that are part of this group as well. They almost experience a double whammy from both the racial discrimination and the sexual orientation discrimination. And that's, that's really sad. That's very sad.
Do you have anything else here? Ron Wapenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing forward your informational meeting today, obviously. How to put this, but I have a level of maybe unknowledgeable towards me being able to visit with you and have the opportunity to, you know, approach your concerns is, is, is great. And then today wouldn't be enough time for me to, to get to the level of where I would need to be to make any progressive decisions or any of that, that, that. It's, as it is in identifying anything, you have to understand from here to here what you're trying to, what you're trying to approach, so. But I did have one question because you made a comment about, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood the comment or didn't understand, or maybe I didn't know. You said it was legal for gays, lesbians, and transgenders to be fired or, or by, or by us, basically. I don't remember what the whole comment, I tried to write it down, but.
If, if an employer discovers that you are gay, lesbian, bisexual, or transgendered in this state, in this town, unless you work for particular business places like Wells Fargo or Rapid City Regional, if they, if they find out you're gay, they could just say, "I don't like your ass," and boot you out the door. Regardless of how good a job you do, how profitable you are for them, you know.
So they could do that based on the fact that you're gay, lesbian, or transgender? Or they do it on, based on other, some other fact? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
And the only recourse that, that Rapid City citizen would have would be to file a federal discrimination suit against them. And that would be.
I'm trying to get my arms around it, Kathy, to help me understand. And I'd, I'd like to at some point reach out to be able to visit with you and, and some sort of a conversational level of a period of time. But, but this one, this one that you pointed out really bothered me because I wasn't aware of the fact that, say, you said you were a sheet metal worker. Say you went to work at a sheet metal plant here in town and for some reason they found out that you were gay or whatever, and, and they decided they could just, they could fire you for that reason?
Yep.
Is that?
Yep.
And stating that you're gay, they can say, "You're fired."
If they said, "Kathy, are you gay?" and I said, "Yes," they could dismiss me regardless of what kind of job I did, what my attendance record was.
They dismiss you for that reason, I guess?
Yep. Yep. Because there is no language in the city legal structure or the state legal structure that guarantees that they can't do that.
But now.
Now, they could fire me for being incompetent, and if I were incompetent, they would be correct.
Could they fire me not being gay or for any particular reason too, though? I mean, I'm just trying to draw some level of parallel because I clearly don't understand that statement.
There is within, you know, because it isn't specifically addressed, an employer can dismiss an employee for any reason unless they have unemployment, human resource policy in place. Some businesses do. Many businesses do.
I know the city of Rapid City.
Certainly not all of them.
We recently brought on a new human resources person too, so I'm sure you guys haven't had any time to visit with her, her philosophies on what she's bringing to the table. Because I think she came from Brookings, didn't she?
Yeah.
She did come from Brookings, so. Kathy, do you live here in town or are you?
You bet I do.
Oh, okay. Do you have a phone number or something that?
Yep.
How would you prefer to be contacted?
You could call me at home.
Okay.
Seven one eight, seven nine, five five. And I do have an answering machine.
Okay.
I can also be contacted at the Black Hill Center for Equality.
Okay.
That's down on West Rapid Street, eleven oh two West Rapid. Don't ask me the phone number, I never remember it. But I'm on the board there and I'm in and out a lot with volunteer activities.
Yeah, I'm busy too, and I hope that I can get together with you sometime so we can have a more in-depth conversation.
And if nothing else, just drop into the center.
Okay.
There's always somebody there, you know, from eleven in the morning on into the evening hours. And we have a number of, of resources on hand there and a number of really, really sharp people, really helpful people.
Thank you again for your time.
Because I, I know that this, this can be sticky when you have to deal with your constituents.
Well, I'm not worried about sticky, I'm more worried about understanding, so.
We do, we do that too. We do that too. We, we accept you for being straight. And that's very easy for us to do. And we would like it to be just as easy for you to accept us for being gay. Okay.
Any other?
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Karen.
Okay.
I apologize for being late. My mother came home and she wasn't very happy today.
Oh, dear.
We haven't talked about, I mean, a number of comments that I received from the general public concerning this issue when it was brought forward were the rights, had a religious bent to it, which was, would a religious person who had religious convictions concerning this issue, would they find themselves in the situation of being in any way kept from voicing their opinions or sharing their ideas? And I wondered if you had a comment about that. I mean, I have my own personal views about that. But I wondered how you have visited about that. Because there is an underlying issue here that we haven't talked about, which is related to people's religious convictions. And I would like to, my sense is that your religious convictions are always yours and are not interfered with, with, by government. But I wondered how you answer that question.
The freedom to be a citizen of however one defines oneself within a community, within a family, within a workplace always remain unique to an individual. I would hope that dialogue between people with differing opinions would always be possible. But I would also hope that it would be not only possible, but toxic and nonjudgmental as well. I know that what I am deeply offends some people's sense of their faith. On the other hand, I look around amongst my gay community and I see many of them who are ministers, who are practicing, you know, practitioners of other faiths, they're Lutherans, they're Baptists, they're Catholics, and they're regular churchgoers and accepted by their communities, by their church communities. And some of them are open in those community, church communities, and some of them aren't. This is just a very human contact, conversation, choice issue that we always have to be open to. Now granted, when you have a differing sexual orientation, you're much more likely to have to defend it than, than if you are, you know, straight. You know, because many people of many different kinds of faiths do not regard being anything but straight as acceptable. So yes, we're available in terms of dialogue on that. You know, we have lots of resources and education material that we can provide to assist people with coming to grips with, with some of their prejudice. But yeah, it's not easy. It's not easy at all. You're not there because it's easy. You're there because it's needs, needs doing.
Would someone, if they, I think the question that I got from constituents was, would I be able to share my views, my values, without fear of some kind of reprisals with this kind of, with the anti-discrimination language?
I would say with absolute certainty. Their views are not being dismissed. You know, but there is a communal comity and right to exist and be and do that shouldn't be interfered with. The conversation, yes.
So you think that individual who expressed a view that would be in opposition to a gay and lesbian lifestyle in a, in a workplace situation, would they be subject to dismissal?
They should be subject, in my opinion, to some education and support, but not dismissal. They shouldn't be dismissed for their opinions and lifestyle any more than we should. And that's what equity language addresses.
I had the feeling that 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 was a concern and, and it wasn't talked about publicly. And so, I mean, my personal view is that religion trumps almost everything. In other words, in your private life, that your religious, your, your ability to practice your religion is in most cases supported by the Constitution. In the workplace, however, I thought we had, I had constituents who didn't understand how that religious experience would be treated in this more public workplace kind of a situation. And I'm just suggesting that that's a dialogue that, I mean, that is a conversation. I, I couldn't reassure those individuals with absolute conviction as to what might, what their consequences might be or what the situation might present for them. And I, I think that's a question that needs to be answered because I remember I participated in lobbying in behalf of the extent, of the maintenance of the Equal Rights Amendment in South Dakota many years ago. And in, as a part of that discussion, there was the discussion about public bathrooms. And there was concern that privacy would be trumped by this effort at equal equality for women in this case. And we made a pretty firm case that your right to privacy would, would not be overruled by the present, by the offering equality for women. And I felt comfortable with that answer. And I could make that answer. I would think as we go forward, that answer will be really important in, in regard to your religious convictions. I mean, I also understood at the time of the Equal Rights Amendment discussion that it was not going to interfere with churches who, who for religious reasons chose not to have any females in their, in their clergy. And I would have honored that. And so I still am, I'm kind of struggling. As you move forward, we will need to talk about that to assure people who are of a faith community that has certain convictions concerning gay, lesbian individuals, how that manifests in terms of their right to practice their religion and what, how it affects what goes on in the workplace for them. And I don't have an answer and I don't expect you to have an answer either. But I do think that's an answer that needs to be.
Let me offer a thought on that. We're all very complicated human beings, each one of us. We come from different experiences, different families. You know, we're different on so many levels that we often overlook the ways in which we are alike. And very often, and I have been engaged in some very lively discussions with religious groups, I have encountered this, the feeling that because one is gay or bisexual or whatever, you are somehow removed beyond the pale. And when they discover in point of fact that we are far more a part of their daily lives than they are aware of, it's generally quite surprising. I mean, I laugh, you know, and I say, "What if we all turned purple and then you'd get to really see us?" Because we are there. We're in the grade schools, we're in the high schools, we're in the hospitals, we're in, you know, all manner of workplaces. And a lot of why many people of faith regard us as something objectionable and to be kept at a distance is because they don't realize how present we really are and how very much we do have in common. And that feeling, that strain, and it is a strain, is not going to be removed until all of us on both sides of the issue establish a dialogue and begin to find what comfort points and discomfort points there are. You're right, it is difficult. It will stay difficult. And if I were in your position and had to go back to a voter and defend this position, you know, you will know how difficult it is. Because you're going to be dumped on by both sides. I promise you. I promise you. But that still doesn't mean that it's not worth doing. We don't avoid jobs because they're hard jobs. And we don't ignore jobs because they're painful jobs. We do jobs because they need to get done. And equality legislation is something that really needs to get done. In my view. We'll help you with it in any fashion we can. And if you want to set up a dialogue between religious groups and gay groups, you know, come on and referee.
That wasn't where I was going with this question.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were, the city council was to look at doing something, the only effect that would have would be on city employees. It wouldn't have any effect on anyone else in Rapid City. Correct?
That's right. That's right.
Any other comments, questions? If not, Kathy, thank you for your presentation.
We had one other person who I think was willing to speak, I don't know if we have time for her.
Thank you for your time, Council, I really appreciate this opportunity.
I was just gonna say, Kathy, if you have, since there was only five of us here, if you got a printout of your presentation, if you wanted to leave some of those or make some of those available, we can get those to the other council members.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We certainly have time if you want to come up and state your name and everything if you want to say something.
My name is Virginia Panarela, and I moved here from New York about thirteen years ago. You can tell by my accent, I can't hide it. My family came from Europe and they experienced discrimination. And then that was taken into account and those laws were changed. I would hope that Rapid City would end that discriminatory possibility. possibility for the gay community. I'm a friend of the gay community. And the more I talk with Kathy and, and other members of that community, the more I see my own opinions and changing, realizing that they have the right to work, just as everyone else does. And that because of their gender identification or preference, whatever, they still have a right to work. My grandmother came to this country and brought her two children and put them in an orphanage because it was during the Depression, and she couldn't support them. When my husband left me with two children, and then he died, I was able to work because that discrimination, discrimination was no longer in place. And I've seen the laws change and, and be enforced. And I think this is the next step, is embracing the gay community. That may not be the right word, but including them as citizens with the right to work. And I was thinking, with the question being asked about someone's religious beliefs, the country was founded on people's ability or the, the freedom to practice a religion. But it's also not to be imposed on other people. And what I'm trying to say is that we're all supposed to be able to live in the same place, respecting each other's rights and freedoms without discrimination as far as, as far as I can see. A few weeks ago, I heard Judy Shepherd talk about her son Matthew, who was terribly killed in Wyoming, and I was so glad that I wasn't from Wyoming. And it really hit home. I've got two sons, I've got two grandchildren. Whatever their orientation would be, no matter what, I wouldn't want anything to happen to them because of it. I think I'm probably rambling, but so many things that what Kathy said are kind of popping around in my mind. I've been discriminated against as a woman. I was in law enforcement in New York for many years. I was disabled by someone who, a man, who assaulted me, who told me that no woman was going to tell him what to do. So I think, I think I somehow am entitled to speak about, you know, all of that. My right to work was taken away from me by this man's opinion. Be that as it may. From what I've seen of Rapid City, it's a wonderful place. I love being in South Dakota. I would love to see us embrace this, these laws to provide for all of our citizens, whatever, whatever they are, whomever they love, however they were born, you know. And I think the, the right to work is, is really an important part of that. And I hope I'm not babbling too much. It's really, it's really scary talking to you folks. And it's quite an honor too, so I want to thank you very much for just letting me share that. Did I babble? Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
You did fine. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, appreciate you both coming today, so thank you. The meeting will be adjourned.